I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would like to welcome everyone to the November 14, 2016, meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. I'm Kenny Luce, chairperson, and to my left is Jeff Ramsey, vice chair. At this time, I'd like to introduce the other board members, starting from my right going to the left, Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township, Chris Howe, South Point Township, Mark Upchurch, Charable Township, Catherine Roberts, Dallas Township, Dot Guthrie, Gastonia Township, Kevin Collier, River Bend Township, and Dot Cherry, Member-at-Large. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome everyone here tonight, and I also would like to welcome everyone that is watching at home. Our next order of business will be for the prayer and the pledge, and then we'll adopt the agenda after that. Mr. Booker.
Thank you. Please join me in prayer. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all our staff members, both the teaching and support members. We ask that you bless all of them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations tonight. Help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership, as we place all our trust and confidence in you. Amen.
Amen.
Members of the board, we are fortunate tonight to have with us, from the Woodhill Elementary, their student council. I would like to invite them forward tonight to join us.
Amen to God, in the gospel with liberty and justice for all.
And we have, ladies, we have Ms. Guthrie here to recognize.
Ladies, this is a very special day for us. This is the first day of American Education Week, and we want you to know that we are thrilled that you took the time this evening to come lead us in our pledge. And just for that, we want to say thank you very much. Thank you for your leadership in your school and for the pledge this evening. Thank you so very much. Let's begin.
Thank you. I'd like to add that these children do a lot of work beyond which you've seen tonight in that tomorrow they're going to be making Thanksgiving cards and sharing them with the local nursing home. They also volunteer with Holy Angels and will plan to be doing that in December of this year. So we're just proud of all their hard work, and we wanted to recognize them tonight. Thank you, Mr. Luce.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Our next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda that is before you. I think everyone's had a chance to take a look at that. This would be an action item, and we need that in the form of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. We accept the agenda as is.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. I have the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Cherry has second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. Booker, our next item is good news.
Yes, members of the board, we are fortunate tonight to have with us our middle school champion football team. On October 22, the middle school championship took place, and Belmont won the championship. So here tonight with us, we have the coaches and some of the players. First, we have Danny Green, who's the head coach, and his assistant Hunter Armstrong, the players Jack Beatty, Peyton Martin, Javious Davis, Omari Hunt, Logan Threatt, and then their principal Susan Redmond is with us. And our athletic programs are fortunate to have folks like Mr. Green. He has been coaching with the team since 2007, and so he has made it to the championship game three times in his past seven years. We're proud of all of our fall athletic programs in the middle schools, and we wanted to recognize this championship team tonight. Mr. Howe.
First, I want to congratulate the coaches, the players, the school. And here's what I'll say, and it's going to be kind of a short, long introduction. I'll take my time, hurry up, and then you'll see why it is what it is. I had the opportunity to go with the CTE class, I think, two weeks ago, and walk through downtown Belmont. I had a group of seventh grade students that were, I thought, would run amok. We would probably lose two on the train tracks and three on the roads, and we didn't. They walked in a straight line. They were yes ma'am, no ma'am, yes sir, no sir. They listened to everything that was said. I had a chance to go in that same school and in that same classroom last year and help out with junior achievement. And so I say all that to say this, that school believes, Belmont Middle School, believes in excellence in everything they do, from administration to education to teaching to athletics. And so what you see here in front of you is not just a group of guys that got lucky, that won some games. You see guys that invested their heart into being excellent in all that they do. And we see that carried out all throughout Gaston County schools. So it ended up being myself against Kevin Collier, Belmont against Matt Holly, and this time I happened to win. And what's that? Yeah, we got Stanley too. We got them all. That's why they're the champions. And so I want to just congratulate Ms. Redmond, the coach, guys. Go back and tell the rest of them, I got a little plaque that says, "In recognition for outstanding achievement Gaston County football." So to get this, I got to take that one.
Thank you.
Really? You're going to give that to me? Don't give that to me. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Great job, brother.
Great job, man.
Good job.
Good job.
This team is powerful.
You did a great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for getting this.
Members of the board, we have another great piece of information tonight.
We have representatives from Cherryville High School with us tonight. We invite them to come forward. Recently, the Don and Carla Beam Foundation donated $10,000 to Charable High School to help purchase Hewlett Packard Elite Book computers for our Advanced Placement Computer Science class. This is the first time the class has been offered in any high school in Gaston County. It is taught by Seth Freeman, who is with us tonight, along with Assistant Principal Kelly Brown, and fortunately, Don and Carla Beam are able to be with us. The AP Computer Science class teaches problem-solving skills, how to develop algorithms and analyze data, and to write and run test and debug solutions in the Java program language, among other goals. Anybody want to try and take that class tonight? But this course would not have been possible without the $10,000 contribution from the foundation, which provided the computers that were needed for the students to use. Mr. and Ms. Beam, Charable is very fortunate to have you, and we really appreciate your support of our school system. Mr. Upchurch?
Thank you. I've known Don for all my life. Really?
I was in your house long before you was born.
And Carla, and just like to say thank you for your generous contribution to Charable High School, and I'm sure that here will grate you joy and reap the benefits with the students that you have given. This certificate is in recognition presented to the Beam Foundation, outstanding contribution for the Charable High School AP Computer Science class, signed by our chairman, Mr. Kenny Luce, and our superintendent, Mr. Jeffrey Booker. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Luce, members of the board, that concludes the good news we have to share tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Booker. Our next item would be public expression. Ms. McGraw, have we had anyone sign up?
No, I haven't had anyone sign up.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. Our next item, it would be, I would like to recognize Mr. Haggins. We're going to have, oh, excuse me, we have to approve our minutes. We have two separate sets of minutes, October 3 and October 17, and I will need the form of a motion for us to be able to accept those. Does anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October 3 and October 17 meeting minutes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collier. Do I have a second?
Mr. Dedman, second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
And it is unanimous. Now, I'll recognize Mr. Haggins.
Good evening, Chairman Luce, Vice Chairman Ramsey, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. It is a pleasure to have two of our principals joining me this evening for a big announcement about our--
Let's try that again. I don't hear it this time. It is a pleasure to have two of our principals joining me for a big announcement about our Nichols for Neighbors fundraising campaign. With me are Rebecca Huffstettler from Stanley Middle School, who is our current Gaston County Principal of the Year, and Brian Denton from Cramerton Middle School, who is chairperson of the principal's leadership team. Ms. Huffstettler and Mr. Denton helped to coordinate this year's fundraising efforts, and at this time, Ms. Huffstettler and Mr. Denton would like to share some information with you.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to be with you again tonight as we announce the fundraising total for our Nichols for Neighbors campaign. As you all remember, this is the second year that we have conducted the district-wide Nichols for Neighbors fundraising project. Last October, when the heavy rain caused flooding in many areas across South Carolina, our schools came together to help our neighbors in need.
The money collected last year went to help schoolchildren and their families in Clarendon and Williamsburg Counties in South Carolina. So this year, when our neighbors in eastern North Carolina needed help because of flooding associated with Hurricane Matthew, we knew we had to do something, and that is why we relaunched the Nichols for Neighbors campaign. You can see from these pictures the devastation that occurred in many communities. The effects of the flooding are unbelievable, and it will take many months and possibly even years for communities to completely recover.
So on Friday, November 4, we had our Nichols for Neighbors Collection Day across Gaston County schools. We challenged each school to raise $200, the equivalent of 4,000 nickels, to help schools in eastern North Carolina affected by Hurricane Matthew.
With the money collected in total, now we are working with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to determine which school districts have the most critical need for help. Based on their input, we will select the districts that will receive our Nichols for Neighbors money.
Now, it's a pleasure to announce tonight that our fundraising total for this year's Nichols for Neighbors campaign is $21,801.15. And to put that in perspective, that's the equivalent of more than 436,000 nickels for schoolchildren in eastern North Carolina, and we expect to get a little more money, and so hopefully, we will exceed $22,000.
The principal's leadership team appreciates the opportunity to help lead this important campaign for Gaston County schools. Not only does it help our neighbors down east, but it also teaches our students about the importance of helping others in a time of need and showing kindness and compassion. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to participate in tonight's announcement about the Nichols for Neighbors campaign.
And Chairman Luce, of course, we would like to thank Ms. Huffstettler and Mr. Denton for their leadership and for being here this evening and sharing this wonderful news with us. I think everyone here would agree that Gaston County Schools has once again shown the true spirit of caring and giving, and we extend our sincere appreciation to our students, employees, parents, and the community for supporting the Nichols for Neighbors campaign again this year.
Thank you, Mr. Haggins, and I would like to just say to the entire county and to the entire school district, I was fortunate to be able to be a part of that last year. We took a road trip with a few of us, and it was a true experience, but the devastation was unreal, what we saw, and the needs of the communities and the stories that we heard. And I think it's a wonderful thing that Gaston County Schools has stepped up to the challenge again, and I would like to thank every faculty and every student in Gaston County from the Board of Education. Thank you again. All right, Mr. Haggins, I don't believe I need to recognize you again. You're already here.
Chairman Luce, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker, it is a pleasure to present to you the 2016 American Education Week proclamation. This is American Education Week, November 14 through the 18. Each year, schools and communities across the nation observe American Education Week to celebrate our public schools and recognize the individuals who dedicate their lives to the education profession. And at this time, I would like to read the proclamation. This is a proclamation for American Education Week in Gaston County schools. Whereas November 14 through the 18, 2016, is American Education Week, a time to celebrate public education and honor the professionals who work to ensure that all children receive a quality education. And whereas the theme for American Education Week is "Great Public Schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility," which encourages citizens across the United States to act as advocates for public schools and champion the belief that education is a pillar of democracy and a cornerstone of American opportunity. And whereas the first American Education Week was observed in 1921, and since then, schools and communities have come together each year to celebrate the week with special activities that bring attention to the importance of public education. And whereas we are proud of our public schools, which provide excellent opportunities for children in academics, athletics, fine arts, career training, and extracurricular activities, and also serve as an integral part of any thriving community. And whereas we wholeheartedly believe in our public schools, which have answered the call for generations to cultivate the future leaders of our families, our communities, and our nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Education is proud to proclaim November 14 through 18, 2016, as American Education Week in Gaston County schools, and encourages the citizens of Gaston County to show support for public education by expressing their appreciation to school personnel and celebrating the outstanding education that children receive from our schools. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minute of the board adopted this the 14th day of November, 2016. Mr. Booker and Mr. Luce, Chairman, Vice Chairman Ramsey, this is our American Education Week proclamation that we are presenting to the Board of Education for consideration and approval.
Thank you, Mr. Haggins. This will be an action item. We will need to vote on this, and I will need that in the form of a motion. Ms. Guthrie?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Do I have a second? Mr. Collier made the second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Haggins. Our next item on the agenda will be our classroom moment, and we're going to recognize Dr. Bolton.
Good evening, Chairman Luce, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. At this time, I'd like to invite up Yorkchester Middle School, Ms. Glennis Brooks, and also Brett Buchanan for our classroom moment. And Ms. Holbrook, Principal at Yorkchester Middle, would like to introduce her students and start our classroom moment.
All right. Chairman Luce, the board members, and Mr. Booker, I want to thank you for this opportunity to introduce Ms. Taylor. Jenna Taylor is an outstanding employee of Gaston County Schools. She's been working with Gaston County Schools for over 16 years and is a valued member of our Yorkchester staff and family. But as Career Technical Education Department advances in innovation, Ms. Taylor has been instrumental in assisting with the smooth transition from tech education to robotics. So I'm glad to have this opportunity for you to see some of the great things that are going on at Yorkchester. So, Ms. Taylor.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Gaston County Education. My name is Jenna Taylor, and I'm here to discuss the middle school CTE robotics program that I teach at Yorkchester Middle School. Each of the three grade levels in middle school CTE robotics construct a robot based on the Universal Systems Model, which is the input, process, output, and feedback steps to develop a solution to their given problem. The input, which is the problem for sixth grade, is an orange collector challenge that has students collecting oranges from a location and moving them to a new location, similar to a bulldozer-style robot. The seventh grade input problem is a debris challenge. The students design and construct a robot that has to collect and lift the debris and place it in a collection container. The students have to add an attachment that lifts the items they collect one inch off of the ground and put them into the container. The eighth grade nuclear disaster challenge requires students to construct a robot that must collect, pick up, and clamp, and move a radioactive object to a new location. Eighth grade's challenge adds to the complexity of the robot, having the robot clamp to the These are some of the drawings that my students had to, this was their final drawings, and that's one of my students doing work on the robot. The process part of the challenge requires students to work together as a team, brainstorm, create sketches, keep a journal, create a final design drawing, and once the team selects a final design drawing, they have to begin constructing their robot. The output phase of the challenge will be fully functional robots that will be tested by the students and measured for success. My students are currently working on their robots to arrive at this phase. During the feedback stage, students will talk about what went well and not so well, and make changes as needed based on feedback given by the different teams. The project will include a reflection and what improvements and changes need to take place to make the robot better. I'm going to introduce my students. I have two sixth grade students, Giovanni and Cameron, and one represented for seventh grade. They're going to talk to you about what they like about CTE robots, and then they're going to show you their robots.
What I like about CTE class is the class discussion in how we work out problems. You get to hear other people's ideas. And the other thing that I like about this class is making the robots, and we learn how to work as a team.
What I like about CTE class is that we get to work together as a team and find out how to make out a robot. And we can work together, and if we have any questions, we can, while we're working together, we can tell our friends or our group the questions that we need.
My favorite thing about CTE class is that we get the work in groups and learn about technology, how to build robots, and use more computers more often, and it helps us have more time to have, like, frequent--
The seventh grade input problem is a debris challenge. The students design and construct a robot that has to collect and lift the debris and place it in a collection container. The students have to add an attachment that lifts the items they collect one inch off of the ground and put them into the container. The eighth grade nuclear disaster challenge requires students to construct a robot that must collect, pick up, and clamp and move a radioactive object to a new location. Eighth grade's challenge adds to the complexity of the robot, having the robot clamp to the These are some of the drawings that my students had to...this was their final drawings, and that's one of my students doing work on the robot. The process part of the challenge requires students to work together as a team, brainstorm, create sketches, keep a journal, create a final design drawing, and once the team selects a final design drawing, they have to begin constructing their robot. The output phase of the challenge will be fully functional robots that will be tested by the students and measured for success. My students are currently working on their robots to arrive at this phase. During the feedback stage, students will talk about what went well and not so well and make changes as needed based on feedback given by the different teams. The project will include a reflection and what improvements and changes need to take place to make the robot better. I'm going to introduce my students. I have two sixth grade students, Giovanni and Cameron, and one represented for seventh grade. They're going to talk to you about what they like about CTE robots, and then they're going to show you their robots.
What I like about CTE class is the class discussion in how we work out problems. You get to hear other people's ideas. And the other thing that I like about this class is making the robots, and we learn how to work as a team.
What I like about CTE class is that we get to work together as a team and find out how to make out a robot. And we can work together, and if we have any questions, we can...while we're working together, we can tell our friends or our group the questions that we need.
My favorite thing about CTE class is that we get the work in groups and learn about technology, how to build robots, and use more computers more often, and it helps us have more time to have, like, frequent time we have on.
Mr. Chair.
Can we get their names again?
Oh, yes. It's Giovanni and Cameron and Lena.
And while they're bringing the robots around to demonstrate, if you all recall at our board retreat last year, you approved and pushed out that now we offer robotics during the school day, and so this is an example of a classroom where they're doing robotics during the school day and not in the club after school. So this is representative of all of our middle schools across the district. So, and they're going to now show their robots to you.
Yes, Mr. Dedman.
Before they show us that, I'd like to...I was privileged to spend the last two Saturdays last year and the year before at the competition, and if none of you have been, it is a lot of fun. I mean, they're wearing T-shirts, they get all excited, they had great pizza. I mean, there's a lot of good stuff, and it really shows a lot of working together with their teacher and other students. So I'd recommend...when is it this year?
March the eleventh.
March the eleventh, so it's really worth going over there.
We have one that works, and the reds are not red.
Shows one that works.
Okay, he's gonna...you want to demonstrate this on the floor?
Yeah, you can do it. I might wreck it.
We're all gonna look like it's going to cost a broom.
Blinded on the carpet.
Blinded on the carpet, at least it works. Yeah, good job. Congratulations. That's all right, walk around and check everybody's. Good job. Good job.
This is the new trial that they came up with. They all drew their own design. So like one, multiple choices. I like the big.
You don't know. You're gonna make it. All right.
Congratulations. Well, you weren't up here.
Do we have any parents? Do we have any parents out? How about all the parents come up? We're gonna get a group picture. We'd like to take a picture with your students. Come on, come on. We're gonna get a picture, but we would like everybody to...for kids to bring up their
Yes, sir.
parents, because behind every robot creator, there's a parent.
We plan to bring you updates periodically throughout the school year in talking with our instruction committee. The request was to bring one this month to give you an update as to the progress that we've made thus far with our CTE program. And Mr. Buchanan, our Director of CTE, will talk with you about elementary things, high school things, and also some other clubs and things that have come along as we've expanded our CTE opportunities in our schools. Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Dr. Bautnath. Good afternoon, members of the Gaston County Board of Education, Chairman Lutz, Superintendent Booker. It's my pleasure to update you on the latest achievements and goals that have been set and met thus far this school year. And when I say this school year, I'd like for everybody to realize, a lot of these things you're gonna see are some pretty big achievements that have happened in 2.5 months or almost three months. So a lot of awesome things have taken place in the district CTE-related in a very short amount of time. So when you hear this year, think two and a half months. First, with Hunter Huss High School, we have shifted to a CTE Career Academy focus there, as you know of. So we've increased the amount of CTE teachers from ten to fourteen. There's been a forty percent increase overall in CTE teachers. This has led to an increase in CTE student enrollment from eight hundred and sixty students to one thousand four hundred and thirty. So we've added five hundred and seventy additional CTE students. So we've taken a whole charitable high school of students and added that into the enrollment of Hunter Huss. So a sixty-six percent increase there. Another added positive benefit is how this will affect Hunter Huss's report card grade. There are four tested metrics on Hunter Huss's report card grade. The highest scoring metric in the past two years has been the ACT Work Keys Test. That tests our CTE concentrators thus far, so when you look at increasing that number of students taking the test in a two-year traditional history, it should increase that score overall looking into the future. Career clusters, obviously, it's all about students and how's this going to benefit them, so we are increasing the amount of CTE career cluster offerings from eight, so this is what was offered last year. And a career cluster is just a grouping of similar courses under one title or heading, so business or construction, that'll be courses underneath those headings or titles. We increased that fifty percent this year and added four additional ones, agriculture, Arts AV, marketing, and STEM, all with individual courses underneath those subtitles or headings. And obviously, you even added teachers, courses, and students. Technology has to follow closely behind that. After all, we are CTE Career and Technology Education, so we've doubled the amount of devices from one hundred and seventy-five to three hundred and fifty. Just in our CTE classrooms, that brings the CTE classes at Hunter Huss to a one-to-one ratio. On top of that, don't want to exclude the rest of the county. This year, we have placed a last order that we will be one-to-one in all of our CTE classrooms, middle, high, and alternative. So a hundred and forty staff. So what it's going to be, and if you think back to the first slide, fourteen teachers, fourteen times twenty-five devices, we have three hundred and fifty devices. So every CTE classroom will have a desktop lab or a Chromebook cart, and this applies to all the CTE classrooms in the district thus far. CTSOs, Career and Technical Student Organizations, these are competitive organizations where, like in DECA, we have marketing students. Our marketing students will go and compete regionally, state, and then nationally if they make that. They've increased this from zero to three in just one year or 2.5 months. Now, the three may not sound significant until you hear me say that's the most offered at any high school. So they went from zero to the most offered at any other high school in 2.5 months. So DECA is for our marketing students. They've already competed one time and had a student score in the top five here regionally, so I'm looking forward to them going to the state. FCCLA will be for our Family Consumer Science students. Examples would be early childhood education and then our food students. And then HOSS Health Occupation Student Association for our nursing fundamentals students, health team relation students. So definitely another awesome opportunity that's afforded to our students to help hone their skills and what they've learned, and do some public speaking, which will help them out in the future. And just a few program highlights and things that have happened in that two-and-a-half-month window. Our foods labs been upgraded or updated. You can see a lot of the old cabinets have been taken out, put some fresh paint in there, lightened it up, all new stainless equipment, everything's mobile, just maximizes the efficiency of the room, so whenever it's lab time, you can put the instructional desk to the side, spread everything out to work with, and then flip side of that, move your lab tables to the side and bring the instructional equipment out to learn from. Here specifically, this is Chef Luca. He participated on the Food Network's Cutthroat Kitchen, came out and cooked a meal with our students, kind of highlighted and gave some extra excitement to what the possibilities could be with, which will be endless in this case. I do believe he is scheduled to come out in the spring semester also. So definitely an awesome opportunity for these students to experience. As you know, Crowder's Mountain Fire and Rescue Squad, I'd like to thank those guys again for this awesome opportunity. When talking with them, this is one of these devices that you would love to have in every classroom, but whenever you ask the price tag and it's six figures applied to it, you know you probably can't afford to put that in a classroom. But when you get a donation from guys like this, it definitely makes that wish list a reality. So the instructor and the students alike both definitely appreciate this. Actually, if you have a chance and you have this, click on this program highlight link. Channel Thirty-Six News came out and did a segment on this. If you haven't seen it, click on this link, you can watch it. I would play it now, but there's about two minutes' worth of advertisement that will definitely bore everybody right now. So really exciting opportunity, it was out there when they delivered this, looking forward to using it. Like I said, the instructor and the students alike are both excited to get this real hands-on life experience. It couldn't be afforded without these guys at Crowder's Mountain. And then Carolina's Regional Medevac Helicopter flew out to Huss, landed on the football field. This is our new EMT program, and the instructor, they got to go out and talk with these guys, the paramedics, the pilot, and just to see how their EMT-one basic credential that they're working towards could be advanced, and this could be an opportunity for them in the future. So got to talk to those guys, it's cool. If you haven't seen the video on that, I think that's linked to Hunter Huss's website, see the helicopter landing on the football field. Switched gears to middle school CTE robotics, you just got to experience that. We are now offering robotics in all eleven middle schools. We have the capacity to offer this to thirty-three hundred students per year, and they can take it in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade if they like. Twelve kits per school and two kits per class. Why this is significant is most of our middle school teachers teach six periods a day. So let's say we get them four kits. Well, one of the periods they would have to build and then tear that down in preparation for the next class. So every single period has two kits of their own to construct at their time and speed, put to the side, and then the next classroom or period gets to work on theirs. So definitely excited about this. If you look at these pictures, these are actually of our schools. To the left, Ms. Taylor's class, when they first started, they were introduced to some videos about robotics. Their initial impression of robotics is it's artificial intelligence, the maximum level, which is about a half a percentile of what's actually out there. In reality, a lot of this is in our local businesses manufacturing robotics and speeding up repetitions that humans may have done. To the right, Belmont Middle School, they're beyond the design and brainstorming phase, and they're actually beginning to build their robots. To the left, we're at Holbrook Middle School, they're at the same phase, and then the right at Belmont back again, they're actually beginning to build their chassis, attach the wheels and the motors layered on. And this one thing about the robotics, it's not just an additional piece dropped off in the classroom, this is integrated into the CTE Technology Education curriculum. There's basically a lot of entry-level physics involved with this. You have gears, simple machines, mechanical advantage, leverage, weight, and force, so these theories are demonstrated or put into action by using the robots. So they are a teaching tool, not just an extra piece to the side. So they are integrated into the teaching strategy of the CTE Technology Education curriculum, which is in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And then when the students learn something new, the teachers have to learn something new also. So we've offered four professional development opportunities, the last one about two weeks ago, this is at Hunter Huss's Media Center. Our fifth one will be in about two weeks, and that's one of the things they expressed an interest to. If we're going to teach our students how to build these, we need to know how to build them. And a perfect example of that was when I was talking with them, I asked one of the instructors, "How long do you think it will take you to build this today?" And they said fifteen minutes. An hour and a half later, we got it done. And that's not downplaying anything, that's what it takes, you need that knowledge when you teach. If you plan on this happening in fifteen minutes and you didn't do it yourself and it took an hour and a half, that's really going to mess up the amount of time it takes for the students to get to the end result of a robot that actually works and does what the challenge is requested from them. So we have monthly meetings, four total, fifth one here coming up soon before Christmas, so we're looking forward to that. And if you can tell by a smile on their faces, it's one of the things, being an ex-teacher, whenever you watch them, they were just like the students. When they got done building this thing, it was all teeth and smiles. They were just excited that it actually worked and they got that done. It's, you know, they were just as proud as the students will be whenever they constructed their robots. Students at work, this year, excuse me, last year, we piloted this at a whole district-wide initiative. This is a state initiative from the governor's office down in order to expose students at a younger age to career pathways and opportunities available to them. And we hear this from our local businesses, too. A lot of times when students come into the high school, they've kind of got a determination of what they would like to do or where they would like to go. So we're looking at informing students at a younger age, what are the possibilities out there? What's available in my local community that I don't know about, and what type of training, et cetera, would it take to enter a pathway there? You can see here, Choice USA Beverage, the students visited, a GSM. Mr. Long was here tonight, definitely a great partner, always willing to help out in the schools. So this happened on April the twenty-ninth, all our middle schools were involved. We sent three hundred and fifty total students from the middle school to eleven local businesses. I just met with the Gaston Regional Chamber here two weeks ago to expand this. We're looking to increase this about six hundred percent by sending all eighth-grade middle students to this, middle school students to this opportunity on the week of March the twenty-seventh. So looking forward to that, twenty-one hundred students, all eighth-grade students, able to visit local businesses and see what's out there that are available to me, what is out there that I didn't even know about, and then what's interesting about it and what type of training would it take for me to attain that job or that skill set for that job? So looking forward to that happening here in March. And this is something we did last year, we asked the teachers just to pay attention to what your students say and write down a couple quotes about what did they say. And a lot of these things, we've even said ourselves, this one right here really, you know, I guess brings it home to me. I've gone past that place a million times and did not know what it was. I'm sure we can all say that, there's businesses out there that you go by, or maybe you know what it does, but what do they do inside? So you may know what it represents, but what do they do inside, and what are the different job opportunities available? Like here, I didn't know what banks, I didn't know banks did that. Most students just think it's tellers, and that's it. You take your money there or you get it from there. So a lot of great opportunities, looking forward to that experience here in March. And then hopefully, every single one of you have received your formal invitation to this, the National Technical Honor Society induction's going to be at Stewart Kramer this Thursday, starting at six PM, have light refreshments afterwards. One of the things I would like to highlight is have an eighteen percent increase from last year to this year. So this takes a student with a senior CTE concentrator with a three-point-oh or higher unweighted GPA, a ninety or higher average in all of their CTE courses, and less than ten absences for the school year. Increase that number eighteen percent from last year. So definitely, if you have the chance, please come out and recognize these students, congratulate them on the awesome things they have done. A lot of these things are put on our students' transcripts to college, looked at very nicely, and we're just really proud that we can increase this number and offer this opportunity to more students in the district. That being said, two and a half months of awesomeness, are there any questions for me?
Yes, Mr. Dedman.
First of all, I'm CTE, I think it's great. A couple questions. When you're doing this integration, are you inviting tested area teachers in language arts and that to collaborate with our CTE teachers? Because that leaves an area for tremendous growth if you are.
That's something we are definitely looking into. Right now, we're focused on just getting our students acclimated and our teachers to the training they need. Once they begin to process, we are going to branch out and incorporate those other teachers.
Have you thought about offering those classroom teachers the opportunity to go to these four meetings that you have during the year where your CTE people, so they can...I know it worked at Highland for a lot of people that really, it really boosts your test scores with those kids, integrate three or four different ways with the vacation, but you are going to do that.
Yes, sir, we are definitely looking to branch out.
Mr. Traill. I'm sorry, I was going to say that I know that Mr. Boone, as he transitioned to Hunter Huss last summer, did some of that training because he had had some background knowledge with you being at Highland, and had done some of that training on the front end with his teachers, and as we get everything going at Huss, we intend to do more of that.
Well, see, I think the thing at Huss is fabulous, and I love the increase, but I think you can also add the academic parts of it in, then it will go off the chart. I mean, it really will.
Mr. Traill.
This one's probably more for the board, Brett and I already talked about it, maybe for Dr. Bautnath. I got to rub elbows a couple weeks ago with Chris Bailey, who is the CTE Director at Craven County Schools down near Camp Lejeune, that area. And so we got talking, he found that I was involved in schools through the board, and he had told me about a meeting that CTE did across the state in Fayetteville, and they got together there. And so when I told him I was with Gaston County Schools, he's like, "Oh, you got that guy, what's his name's the CTE Director?" Because he told me everything y'all are doing. And so I told him a few more things, and I said, "You know, that guy, he probably makes a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, and his name is Jake Buchanan." So when they Google him, they'll find out that he plays for the Cubs, because he was very, very impressed with Brett. And so Brett, you do a great job. What Gaston County Schools is doing and this board is encouraging is not only being seen in Gaston County. Have you thought about offering those classroom teachers the opportunity to go to these four meetings that you have during the year where your CET people, so they can, I know it worked at Highland for a lot of people that really, it really boosts your test scores with those kids, integrate three or four different ways with that, with the vacation. But you are going to do that.
Yes, sir, we are definitely going to branch out.
Ms. Traill.
I'm sorry. I was going to say that I know that Mr. Boone, as he transitioned to Hunter Huss last summer, did some of that training because he had had some background knowledge with you being at Highland and had done some of that training on the front end with his teachers. And as we get everything going at Huss, we intend to do more of that.
Well, see, I think the thing at Huss is fabulous and I love the increase, but I think you can also add the academic parts of it in. Then it will go off the chart. I mean, it really will.
Ms. Traill.
This one's probably more for the board. Brett and I already talked about it, maybe for Dr. Boulton. I got to rub elbows a couple of weeks ago with Chris Bailey, who is the CTE Director at Craven County Schools down near Camp Lejeune, that area. And so we got talking. He found out that I was involved in schools through the board. And he had told me about a meeting that CTE did across the state in Fayetteville. And they got together there. And so when I told him I was with Gaston County Schools, he's like, "Oh, you got that guy, what's his name's the CTE Director?" Because he told me everything y'all are doing. And so I told him a few more things and I said, "You know, that guy, he probably makes $190,000 a year and his name is Jake Buchanan." So when they Google him, they'll find out that he plays for the Cubs because he was very, very impressed with Brett. And so Brett, you do a great job. What Gaston County Schools is doing and this board is encouraging is not only being seen in Gaston County, but out near Camp Lejeune, they're going, "How do we do that, what you're doing?" Because he wanted to know how many CTE high schools we had. And I said, "Well, just kind of one." And he didn't believe me in that, that we only had one that was concentrated. He thought we had four or five spread out throughout our schools. And we do, we just don't call it that. We call it a high school that's getting CT education. So they were very impressed and he said a lot of people in Fayetteville were as well. So appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
And I would like to make one comment about the workplace. You know, you were sending kids out. That was a great impart from the CET task force. I went to several meetings and they made a commitment to Gaston County Schools, opening to their doors to bring our students in. And we need to thank them whenever we see them because they definitely stepped up to the plate on this. And I think our kids have a much more desire to do some of the things that they do when they don't have to wonder what goes on in those buildings that they see driving down the road. And I just wanted to recognize them to make sure that we, we don't forget them because I feel like that program's going to grow. More businesses are going to want to get on the, on the, on the list with us far as crossing over with our students' learning.
I agree.
Thank you, though. We appreciate both of you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Dr. Boulton, you just stay right where you are because I'm getting ready to recognize you again.
Ms. Hester's joining me at the podium. Tonight I have with me Ms. Hester, our Director of Title I, who will present information to this board on the York Chester School Improvement Grant. If you'll recall, in the late summer, I asked for permission to apply for the grant. And so now we want to share an update with you about the outcome of applying for the grant. Ms. Hester?
Thank you, Dr. Boulton. Members of the board, Superintendent Booker, I appreciate the opportunity to share with some information for you tonight concerning the York Chester School Improvement Grant, sometimes referred to as SIG. York Chester did receive this grant in October of this year. We were awarded $1,924,576, which is a lot of money to do some great things for boys and girls. The grant is funded over a five-year cycle. This is our planning year 2016-17, followed by three years of implementation, and then a fifth year, which is sustainability, to try to build capacity. We did apply for this grant based on the turnaround model. And what that means for us are a couple of different things. It requires that no more than 50% of the current staff be retained. We are working in conjunction with Human Resources to establish a timeline for application and the hiring process that's involved with that model. Points of emphasis to share with you concerning the grant. We are going to be employing balanced literacy across the content with our literacy and reading. Small group instruction will continue to be a focus in both reading and mathematics. This grant does emphasize wraparound services that are available to meet the unique needs of the whole child. So there's a lot of emphasis on that behavior component as well, mental health services, all those services coming together to better serve the children. And there is extensive and intensive professional development for all staff members that will be remaining at York Chester. And that professional development is ongoing throughout the five-year cycle. It does employ a pay-for-performance model. And that does include both classified and certified staff members. That model is based upon incentive awarded based on increased student achievement and staff attendance. Be happy to entertain any questions if you would.
I would like to add, because she won't brag about this, our application was the highest scored application of all submitted across the state.
Thank you, Superintendent Booker. That was exciting.
Ms. Cherry?
The 50%, is that just for instructional staff or is that for the entire staff?
No, ma'am. That is the entire staff. It's, that includes classified, certified, custodial clerical.
And I would like to add that we did go over, Dr. Maddox and I, we met with the staff last week so that we explained things in even more detail with them, so they would not be hearing that for the first time tonight.
Yes, Ms. Traill.
And I guess that was my question, was we brag, and I think it's true, that we have great quality of instructors in Gaston County. So is that going to be a volunteer basis at first when you start reducing 50%? Because I would hate for a teacher to walk away from that school, either volunteer or non-volunteer, and it seemed like, "Well, we needed to, to cut you, put you somewhere else to make the school better." Does that make sense to me? Because I think, and I'm sure, and I'm not saying anything that you guys haven't already thought about as far as being sensitive to quality education and not kicking a teacher, but I just want to reiterate, I understand the grant, that they try to get fresh people in in order to be as successful as possible, sometimes outside in the aisles are better. But I also want to just say from this board, we have some, some amazing teachers at that school. So because it says that we have to retain them more than 50%, doesn't mean that half our teachers shouldn't be teaching in Gaston County, so.
And Mr. Howe, on behalf of the board, that was the purpose of us going out last week. Dr. Maddox and I actually had a presentation for them and they were given an opportunity before that meeting to post questions for us to come prepared to answer. Then we stayed after and talked to individual teachers. And the biggest thing that we shared with them is that this is not a reflection on you teaching staff or support staff that you haven't done your job. This is the way the grant opportunity was given to the district. And we were sent an invitation to apply for the grant. You know, the state is talking about looking at data from schools and pulling certain schools out of districts. So this was the option that we wanted to utilize because we know that we have good teachers in our district and we're going to play by the rules of the grant so we can receive the money. But we agree with you and we certainly continue to stress to the teachers, it's not to say that anyone at the school is not effective and efficient in their role, it's that we are meeting the requirements of the grant.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
Will those teachers be reassigned to?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly why I took Dr. Maddox. People like to see the HR person when you're talking about things like this. And we shared with them that they will be the first to be placed within the district before a transfer window or anything else is open for other teachers to move around in the district.
And I have a second question regarding support services. Would the counselor, social worker, and nurse also be included in that?
They're all included, yes, ma'am. Everyone that's employed in the school will be included in the process.
Yes, Mr. Rupter.
This is the same, this is the same grant that is?
Woodhill, yes, sir.
Ms. Hester, you have been through that.
Yes, sir, I have done that a time or two.
So I'm glad you're in there right now. But yeah, it does, there is, there was apprehension back then about moving employees. And I know Dr. Maddox will be ready and ready to go when, when that hap, when that does happen and you have to move employees around. And it's an awesome task out there.
And Mr. Rupter, I think one of the benefits this time is we are way, way ahead of this cycle. We were dealing with Woodhill, May-June, so we are ahead of the curve with that.
Yeah, and that was the first time, yeah, that we have dealt with this type of grant. And yeah, I was riding down 85 and they called and they said, when I was chair, and they said, "We're doing a grant and we're moving people." And I thought, "Oh, no." But it worked, I mean, it works out. And so they will get the salary increase. Is there a pay, is there a pay performance plan?
And that will be explained to all of the employees that remain at the school and the new ones that come in.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
So what would be Mr. Buchanan's role as the teachers that are in the CT program? How would that be?
Well, we would, regardless of who the CTE team is next year for the school, yes, ma'am. Actually, we have already met and we will meet with, for example, Ms. Brooks, who works with middle schools, Ms. Hester, who's managing the grant, the principal of the school, and then folks like Mr. Buchanan, who will help with the CTE piece. Because it will take all of us to make sure that we redesign the school appropriately to get the achievement results that we need. And CTE, we know, is a strong core value in our district and is going to move us forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is Special Education Services, and I would like to recognize Dr. Boulton.
And Ms. Minnick, our Executive Director of Exceptional Children, has come to join me at the podium, and she will share information with you about wraparound services within our district.
Hi, Chairman Lute, Superintendent Booker, and members of the board. I'm really excited to be here tonight to talk to you about the wraparound services that we provide for our students in our exceptional children's program. In our world, we call them supplementary aids and devices. And it can range from everything, from a fidget to an adult support or one-on-one that is with a child all day, every day. And to help make these decisions, we have a Standards of Practice Form that our teachers use to collect data on the behaviors that they're concerned about with their student. And it can be on a functional life skill, it can be about a communication skill, social skills, or behaviors that are concerns to them. So as we walk through the rest of the presentation, I'll kind of talk to you about where this piece plays into things. One area that we often need to help our students with is with their self-help support. And that can be anything from an augmentative communication device, which is what you see pictured up there, where a student that is non-verbal or has limited verbal skills can use those picture cards and clues to communicate with their teachers and their peers and their families at home. We work real closely with families to make sure that we're using the same type of device so the student's not having to learn two separate systems. We can provide these devices for our families if needed. And then also activities of daily living, like toileting, dressing, and hygiene. It can also be something as simple as a fidget for students that just need something in their hands, something to keep them busy, something to calm their nerves, like I've been using this tonight over there before I came up, just rolling in my hand. Another example of augmentative communication device is my lovely necklace that I have on tonight. And this might be something like that one of our preschool students might need on their neck if they're having trouble paying attention and sitting in a circle time because they're really excited and they want to get over there and play with those trucks and cars. And they just know somebody's going to take their favorite truck before they get there. So if we can tell them, "Look, you can wear it on your neck. And if you can make it through 10 minutes of circle time, then your first center gets to be, you know, the trucks and cars and your truck will be right there that you want." Things like that are just really soothing to them and easy for us to provide, but we just usually have to talk as a team. And that's where that IEP team comes in sometimes to make sure that we're thinking about those little things that can help. And it's amazing what a tremendous difference it can make for a student sometimes just to have those little things. It can also be as sophisticated as computer systems, like eye-gaze systems or adapted keyboards that you might see some of our students use, or environmental control systems, which can be adapted light switches or adapted doorknobs. We have a student in one of our high schools now who has a remote because every time they went from building to building, they had to wait for somebody to open the door for them. And the students were really kind and didn't mind, and everybody did. But who, you know, what high schooler wants to have to rely on somebody else to open the door for them? So we worked with our facilities department and got a remote put in there and that student has it on their wheelchair and now they go where they want, when they want, and don't have to worry about having somebody to help them. It just gives them a new level of independence. Another area where we provide support is with our hearing and vision, students that are hearing impaired or visually impaired. We help them with orientation and mobility skills. And that is their ability to maneuver the school building in elementary school, just can they get from their classroom to the media center without somebody with them? And sometimes that requires an adult support to help them initially, and that's an orientation and mobility specialist. All the way up through high school, where we work with them on getting to the stadium for the football games or getting to gyms for pep rallies, or how to maneuver in a grocery store. It might be we take them on a field trip to the grocery store and teach them how to maneuver around there. We have interpreters and signing TAs. And the difference there is our interpreters are held to a higher educational standard and they help our students that are in those physics classes or the higher-order math. They have a much more sophisticated language and understanding of how to interpret for the students what's being said. And a signing TA would, might be available for our students that are younger, that have a lower vocabulary level, that might use sign language as an additional way to communicate, not their only way to communicate, but those are both things that we provide. And then, of course, we have braille documents and magnification devices, like you see the one student using there. We also provide medical support for our students. And this can include support with feeding, mobility, and use of medical equipment because this is most often a result of a doctor's orders because we rely on them for that medical expertise. We work really closely with Betty Worthy and our school nurses to make sure that we're providing the right level of service, whether it be a CNA or an RN. We have that, you know, that difference in abilities for our helpers that we can be sure we're providing support that the student and the parent is comfortable with in the school. And then the final way, and probably where we see most of our need for additional adult support, is with behavior support. And this can be helping with crisis intervention techniques, behavioral interventions, coping strategies, timeout activities, time structuring strategies, or safety concerns. And I wanted to share with you a couple of examples here. One example of where we might have thought we needed a one-on-one support and we didn't, and then one where a one-on-one support has made a tremendous difference to a student. And the first example would be a student in one of our elementary schools who, you know, has a lot of behavior needs, but is in a classroom that's really structured and working well for him. But every time he went to PE, he would, you know, he would get a fourth of the way through the class and he would just fall to pieces. And that is one of those classes that we want all of our students to enjoy and be a part of, and he would be so excited to go. And so as the data came in and we were looking at things, you know, we kind of noticed it was the timing of the day and when it was more unstructured. So the PE teacher worked with this child's classroom teacher. And every week, they video the game being played, the teacher and the PE teacher, and they do a little monologue for the student as they go along and say, "The next thing we're going to do is." And then they, you know, about halfway through, they go, "Now, if you start to feel yourself getting upset, this is your red dot that you can go sit on until you're ready to come back." And they let the student watch that several times before he goes to PE, and he's doing great. He just needed that extra support and that team working together so he could be successful in the PE classroom. A time when we've had a student that really benefited from that adult support is in another elementary school where we have a child with Tourette Syndrome. And they would reach a level of escalation multiple times in a day because we always look at the duration, how long is that lasting, how often is it happening, the frequency and the intensity of the behavior when we make our decisions. So this was multiple times a day, really severe, you know, upset, crying, you know, unable to cope, truly disrupting his learning, disrupting the learning of the other students. And so we've placed a one-on-one with him, who has been able to recognize in the child when he has reached his limit, because sometimes that's really hard for our elementary students, was able to take him out and just go walk around the building for a few minutes, let him kind of de-escalate and come back. And now that student is able to go, "Mr. Justin, I need a break right now. Can we go walk around the building?" And he and his one-on-one go. And so he's starting to self-regulate and de-escalate and recognizing his own self those triggers. So, you know, we're really hopeful that, you know, as he moves through middle school and high school, we can fade away that adult support because we consider it the most restrictive thing we can do to a child. Because when our students graduate, we want them to be ready to go get a job and to work, whatever their level is. And if they have to have that adult support with them at that point, our employers are not going to want to hire them. So we really work hard, you know, to find those good fits, but to have a fade plan in place so that as they get older and they're ready to graduate, they truly are independent graduates that are able to go out into the workforce. Any questions?
Any questions from, from the board?
Mr., mister?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
I don't have a question, but I want you to know that the last three weeks or so, I've heard a lot about the garden at Webster. There's a special garden at Webster and parents are talking about that garden.
Yes.
So that's special for the children, hands-on?
It is. It's wonderful. It's a place I like to go and de-stress a little bit, too.
So many parents have been talking about that garden. So whatever the children are doing, whatever you're doing, I think is spilling over into the community, and it's much appreciated.
Good. Principal Howe has done a great job with that garden and getting it together.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is school improvement plans, and I would like to recognize Dr. Baughn Knight, and I think she's got some help from Mr. Jackson.
That is correct.
Good evening, Chairman Lutz, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. On October 6th, the State Board of Education approved the list of low-performance schools. We have seven low-performance schools in Gaston County Schools. This year, the state requires each low-performance schools to develop their school improvement plan using the NC Star, NDA Star platform. The platform requires each school to work with 12 research-based key indicators, and if implemented with fidelity, should lead to school improvement. The key differences between the regular school improvement plan process and the process for low-performance schools are the low-performing schools have to implement 12 key indicators that are research-based to help improve efficiency by focusing on a collaborative approach in the school. The requirement of schools to meet twice a month to discuss the progress they are making toward the implementation of the 12 key indicators. And throughout this process, the schools will receive state and local coaching on the 12 key indicators on a routine basis. Schools and district staff members were trained on how to use the NC Star platform on October 7th. During a four-week timeframe, schools were required to identify a process leader, assess the 12 key indicators to see if any of the 12 key indicators were fully implemented at their school, work with their school improvement team and leadership team to develop the plans for the 12 key indicators that were not fully implemented, and adjust the plan based on feedback from our executive directors. Schools send a letter home on October 31st notifying parents of their status as a low-performing schools, and we have provided guest logins and username and password for the public to be able to view these plans. The plans tonight are being presented for your approval.
And I would just add, members of the board, you approved the school improvement plans for our other schools in a previous board meeting. This was a requirement by the state to use a different process if you were deemed a low-performing school. Mr. Jackson and his team have worked with them to get this. We sent you a separate communication the same time the letters went with steps of how you could walk through if you wanted to look at any of those, so you could be prepared to approve them tonight. And we do recommend their approval. And I would just commend the whole academic services team for the support they have given to low-performing schools. And we would say to you that these standards are nothing compared to the standards that this board has set for our schools to strive to reach as they come out of low-performing status. And I will remind you that last year it was 13, this year it's 7, and we're going to reduce that number again this year.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? This is an action item, like Mr. Booker stated, so we'll have to have a motion for this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie?
I would like to move that we accept the standards that are recommended by the superintendent and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Do I have a second? Ms. Cherry has second. Any other discussion for Dr. Baughn Knight or Mr. Jackson? Seeing no other discussion, all in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you all very much. We appreciate all your hard work, and we look forward to seeing great results. And like Mr. Booker said, we're moving that number downward. That's the way we like it. So thank you. Our next item on the agenda would be an update from our two committees, our curriculum committee. Ms. Guthrie?
Mr. Chair, Catherine Roberts will share that information with the board.
Thank you.
Bear with me, because we covered lots of topics at our last meeting. Those present were, I'm sorry, our meeting was held October 24th, and those present were Dot Guthrie, Dr. Baughn Knight, Jeff Ramsey, Dot Cherry, myself, Lilita Williams, James Montgomery, Jody Edwards, Lee Smith, Carrie Minnick, Glynnis Brooks, George Connor, Kristen Behr, Laura Clark, Chad Carper, Dr. Potter, and Derek Jackson. So we had a lot of us there discussing a lot of topics. Smart Lunch at North Gaston was updated by Principal Connor and Assistant Principal Kristen Behr. The administration and the staff have assigned every student a Smart Lunch schedule. It's very structured for the freshman academy to ensure the students are not overwhelmed by the process. Staff has provided valuable input to the changes that were made. The changes have been communicated to the parents via Connect Ed surveys on the school website and groups within the schools, such as PTO and booster clubs. Smart Lunch at Forest View was updated by Chad Carper and Dr. Potter. The Smart Lunch Committee built detailed schedules for tutorials, club meetings, faculty and staff supervision assignments, and all the schedules have been prepared for the remainder of the 2016-2017 school year. There are consequences in place for students who do not comply with their Smart Lunch schedule. A survey linked to a detailed PowerPoint presentation was shared with the parents, and the school received positive feedback from parents and students. Board members stressed repeatedly the importance of communicating with parents, and the board is in favor of Forest View beginning Smart Lunch spring of 2017. Analysis of student work information was given by Laura Clark. ASW is the process used to obtain a student growth measure for teachers who do not have standardized measures, such as EOGs or EOCs. Sixth grade teachers through 12th grade in specific areas participate in ASW. All evidence submitted by the teacher will be rated and then discussed between the principal and the participating teacher. Golden Leaf Grant information was presented by Dr. Baughn Knight. The Golden Leaf Grant will fund the expansion of the Gaston County Career Academy at disadvantaged schools by adding an advanced manufacturing program. This will be a joint grant between Gaston College and Gaston County Schools. Both groups receive equal portions of the grant, $750,000 if awarded. This advanced manufacturing program will pilot at Bessemer City High School and Hunter Huss High School and directly align with Gaston College's new advanced manufacturing facility and program. This program will offer four industry-recognized certificates. The board had requested data on student proficiency when class sizes increased and decreased by tracking students leaving third grade and going into the fourth grade. 2013 through 2014 to 2014 to 2015, in eight schools, class sizes increased and proficiency increased. In 10 schools, the class size increased and proficiency decreased. 2014 to 2015 to 2015-2016, in seven schools, class sizes increased and proficiency increased. In 13 schools, class size increased and proficiency decreased. Middle school math was updated by Glynnis Brooks and Carl Saint. In the last meeting, there was a concern from the board in regards to middle school math resources. Ms. Brooks and Mr. Saint explained that every student in middle school is assigned an instruction book for class. It is a consumable resource. Every student has a practice problem book that should remain at home. Excuse me. The at-home book aligns with the book that stays at school, so parents can work with the child. Next year, students will receive brand-new materials.
That's a lot.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Yes, Mr. Collier?
When you said Smart Lunch will start in Forest View spring 2007, what does spring mean?
We have one more minute.
I think that the request from the committee was that they had not authorized the committee, so I plan to look at the principal to bring that to the full board more clearly, potentially in December, January. So it's not been approved before. I'm going to leave our meeting.
With the plan and to implement it, if approved, it is...
The principal reached our request to implement it in August, and then the board has kept it in committee because they had lots of things that they wanted to see. So potentially, if it's allowed to happen this year, it will begin in January.
Okay. All right.
Yes, Mr. Howe?
On the item on the back of, well, it's on the back of my sheet, for your committee report, I asked for the kind of a surface dive on the elementary student performance as it related to class size increase from third grade to fourth and fifth grade. I'm looking at the minutes from your meeting. In the 2013-14, 2014-15, as you reported, there were eight schools that, or eight class sizes that increased, proficiency increased. Then there were 10 that increased, but the proficiency decreased. The following two years, there were seven classes that increased and proficiency increased, and then 13 schools that the class size increased and proficiency decreased. Don't we, and I'm going to ask a side question, don't we have more than 18 and 20 elementary schools that have a third to fourth grade in those? Aren't we right around like 26, 25, 26 of elementary schools that currently have a third and fourth grade?
If I can answer that question, they pull the schools that had a change in enrollment and consider it such that the class size. So the other schools are not included in this information because they didn't have an increased class enrollment that would correlate with their proficiency.
Okay. And then on that last sentence, "is based on the information received from accountability, it was determined that a direct correlation could not be made between class size and student achievement." I'm not a data expert, and I'm not going to claim to be one, nor am I an education expert, nor am I going to claim to be one. But if you go from eight to seven on the increase, and then you go from 10 to 13 on the decrease, to me, there's a data correlation that says we're going the wrong direction. And I don't, I'm not saying that to say that the schools that are in this component are bad schools. What I'm asking is, can we take a deeper dive in a work session as a board to find out, is there something going on here that the board can help support, either financially or staff, or what that might be, in order to make that number go the other way? Because the trend, I mean, I'm a trend guy, the Panthers are losing, the trend is they're going to keep losing. And the trend here is that we might still keep going the wrong way, and I want to make sure we don't do that, that if we're going to meet the goals that are on that wall, that the board's ahead of that, and maybe a deeper dive is needed as a full board to say, what can we do to support our education system in taking that trend the other way?
And Mr. Howe, we certainly can do that. In talking with our accountability folks, because they're the statistics for the districts, one of the things that they talked about, for example, some of our schools are very training, so it's hard to say, this class had 24 students this year, and so their proficiency went down because of that. Because in some of our schools, students end up in another school at the end of the school year, so you're not even counting students that have been there the entire school year. Then a teacher may have left the school. A teacher may have been on a maternity leave. So there's several factors, so we definitely need to do a deeper dive to make a direct correlation.
And I think the other part of that, and I don't see here, and maybe I'll just, I might not have asked for it last time, so I apologize if I didn't, is I also think there's a, there can be a direct difference or a distinct difference between proficiency and growth.
Yes.
And so the growth element here is missing on the sheet, too, so I'd kind of like to see what that is. But again, I would like to see us do that if it pleases the board, sometimes a deeper dive as a board, so that we all kind of are abreast of that. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Roberts?
I will say, we should have growth numbers soon, because I had requested those as well.
We'll make those recommendations to the staff, and then they'll report back to us, okay? All right. Kevin, do you have some? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, yes. Our operations committee is next, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Collier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My mic didn't go off tonight. Members of our committee are Mr. Lee Dedman, Mr. Chris Howell, and Mr. Mark Upchurch and myself. And we did not meet this evening, early this afternoon, but we do have three items that will appear in our closed session, and that's the only report I have at this point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collier. Our next item, I would like to recognize Mr. Booker, I guess, we have a consent agenda, and I think everyone is, can see everything that's on the consent agenda, and this will be an action item also. So, Mr. Ramsey?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Do I have a second? Ms. Cherry has second. Is there any questions? Seeing no questions, I'd like to call everyone in favor, and it is unanimous on the consent agenda. Thank you very much. I would like to recognize Mr. Booker.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Members of the board, I will, on your consent agenda, one great item that was in there, you, as you looked at the detail, you see you got over almost $800,000 of technology equipment, and it cost the district less than $1 because of the way we've managed our federal funds. And so it's good, hard work being done for those areas. Brett talked about Thursday night and the Honor Society that will be hosted at Stuart W. Kramer. I wanted to remind you of that. Also, on Wednesday afternoon at 4:00, we have been very fortunate that Mr. Chris Hafer has continued to support us by donating a car to recognize an outstanding employee of Gaston County Schools, and we have always traditionally tried to hold that during Teacher Appreciation Week. So this Wednesday at 4:00, that will be held at Stuart W. Kramer, and we invite all of you to attend. That's always an exciting time to watch someone walk out with a car. And then Thanksgiving holiday will be next week, and I wanted to remind you that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday are student holidays, and then Wednesday is the Teacher Annual Leave Day, leaving that Thursday and Friday are closed days for the district. And so all departments will not be working those two days. Earlier this afternoon, we had a recognition of two of our board members, and I was going to let Mr. Lutz speak first.
Yes. Earlier this afternoon, we had a reception to bid farewell to two of our board members, Mr. Upchurch and myself. But no, all kidding aside, it's been a great honor to serve with each and every person on this board. It's been an honor to serve with past boards, and I've had the opportunity to serve with three superintendents. And I would like to congratulate Mr. Ramsey, Ms. Guthrie on their reelection, and I would like to, I would like to recognize Brent Moore and Terry Ursery as the two new board members. I think with the guidance of our regional superintendent through the next few months, that this school system will continue to grow. I think we have excellent staff, and I appreciate every staff member, every central office, every teacher. And I think Mark has the same sentiments. He, you know, a school system is only as good as the people that are within it. But I would like to say thank you, and I would like to recognize Mr. Upchurch for him to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz.
You're more than welcome, Mr. Upchurch.
It's been an honor to serve on this board and with all the members here and past members. It was a great time, coming in here and being interviewed because you were appointed, and just saying that, you know, "I'm here to help the board. I don't come with an agenda. I'm leaving without an agenda." But just to help the children and help the board progress down the road and move the system to a better place than when I found it. So thank you, Mr. Booker, and that's about it.
Well, I would like to, I'm not going to let you get away with that lighted thing, Mr. Lutz. I want to invite Todd Up to share a few things that were shared earlier tonight, because I think the community needs to know how much you've done.
Excuse me, Mr. Booker. Are you in charge? Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't know. You didn't run for reelection, so maybe I will be for a while. Todd, would you share some of that, please?
Mr. Lutz, these comments are very deserving, so it is a pleasure to share this information about Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch and their most significant contributions as members of the Gaston County Board of Education. As Board of Education members, elected officials, and public servants, Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch have answered the call to dedicate a significant part of their lives to the 32,000 children and 3,800 employees of Gaston County Schools. They have worked diligently for our schools and made decisions with the best interest of our students, employees, and the community always in mind. Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch have a combined 21 years of dedicated service and leadership on the Board of Education, and both have served as vice chairman and chairman. During their time on the board, they have worked with other board members, the superintendent, school administrators, and the community to improve educational opportunities for all children. Mr. Upchurch has served on the board since 2007, when he was appointed to fill the chair of township seat held by John Aker. He retained the seat when he was elected in 2008 to serve a four-year term. He was reelected in 2012. Mr. Upchurch served as vice chairman from 2008 until 2010, and was chairman from 2010 until 2012. Mr. Lutz was first elected to the board in 2004 as the Crowders Mountain Township representative. He was reelected in 2008 and in 2012. He was vice chairman from 2010 until 2012, and served consecutive terms as chairman 2012 until 2014 and 2014 until 2016. Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch have worked hand-in-hand during their time on the board as they face challenges together and share... they faced challenges together and shared many opportunities. In 2010, as we all remember, Gaston County Schools faced serious budget issues because of the economic downturn. During that time, the school system saw a reduction in funding of more than thirty million dollars. Despite having to make critical financial decisions, Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch worked to protect the classroom as much as possible. They did this because they understand that what takes place for children in the classroom is more important than anything else. Over the years, Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch have worked with their fellow board members to enhance classroom technology for students and teachers in several ways, including the installation of smart boards in all classrooms. And we all remember our successful four-million-dollar smart board campaign. They also worked to provide wireless internet access at all schools, replace outdated computers, and purchase Chromebooks, iPads, and other modern devices for student use. They also sought ways to improve salary supplements for teachers and other employees, which has been a top priority for the board in recent years. Further, they advocated to increase security measures at our schools to ensure that every school campus is a safe one. They did this by supporting efforts to upgrade the visitor check-in systems, install buzz-in entrance systems, update camera surveillance and life safety equipment, and provide police resource officers at all schools. Furthermore, they sought, oversaw construction projects as a result of the one-hundred-seventy-five million-dollar bond referendum approved in 2007. This included the renovation of Hunter Huss High School, the purchase of the former Hope Lutheran School that was transformed, transformed into Hawks Nest, the construction and opening of Stuart W. Kramer High School, and the current work to build a new elementary school in Gastonia and a new middle school in Stanley. Additionally, Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch were instrumental in the establishment of the Gaston Early College High School on the Gaston College campus, the opening of Hawks Nest STEAM Academy, which is the first elementary school magnet program in Gaston County, the hiring of a new superintendent of schools, and enhancing career and technical education programs to ensure students have the skills and knowledge necessary to succeed in a competitive workforce. Perhaps most important, Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch worked with other board members to strengthen the school district's instructional program and provide more academic opportunities for students. Under their leadership, we have seen a record amount of scholarships awarded to our seniors. The graduation rate is at an all-time high, and children are achieving at higher levels because of intense focus on reading, the STEAM curriculum, robotics, activities that emphasize science and math, and many other academic and student support programs. As respected and visionary board members, Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch have provided guidance and leadership, offered advice and expertise, and made decisions that have affected all areas of school district operations. From curriculum and instruction to athletics, school nutrition, bus transportation, operations, facilities, technology, and communications, and many other areas, Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch are leaving their mark on Gaston County Schools. And we are grateful for and most appreciative of everything they have done to make public education better for the children of Gaston County. Again, Mr. Booker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to share this information about Mr. Lutz and Mr. Upchurch. All of us would agree that they have been visionary members of the Gaston County Board of Education, and we will surely miss them. Thank you.
Todd, thank you for mentioning that. It would take another hour to continue to talk about your contributions, but I think everyone would agree, we are a better school system because of the service that you all have provided. You have been integral in saying, our students need to be challenged. You've talked about the leadership in our classroom, and you didn't just talk about it, you supported it. You've worked to increase salaries for our teachers, and you've stood by, and every year this board has passed a resolution asking the state to continue to increase funding for our teachers. It's been your first request, and you've always supported that. You've made other changes to our personnel in trying to support them on a budget that didn't increase, and so you've made hard decisions. But through it all, you've always said, what are we doing academically? What extracurricular opportunities are we offering to our children? And how can we support, as you just saw with Ms. Minnick's presentation, the whole child? You believe that every child can succeed. And while our graduation rate is at an all-time high, you have talked about, are we making children able to be successful in life? Is our community better because of what our school system is doing? For me, I've had the pleasure of working with both of you as the deputy superintendent and working closely on the Facilities Committee and all the work that went on through operations and the time that you all gave to that. And then, I wish, for all of our employees, I wanna say, thank you. But more importantly, for all of our children, thank you. You've been outstanding board members and have always tried to be a member of the team and not put yourself in front of that team. And we used to joke when Mr. Upchurch was chairman, that if we said we were gonna have three people in a room, he would show up to be there and thank them and celebrate them. He never missed a meeting. He always was there to support and was just present at everything in the community. I remember as you were named chairman, you said, now he's already set a bar that I can't match, and we appreciate that you never said no. And to Mr. Lutz, with all the regulation changes and all the reporting we have to do, you have never met me with a cross word when I've had to call to say, I'm required to report to you this, I'm required. And those calls have been late at night, early in the morning, and throughout the day. And so we appreciate your willingness to allow us to do that. And so, there are many more things I would like to say, but again, to just stress how unselfish you have been with that. And we would ask if you would let us honor you by you going down front and having your board members stand behind you as we present you these two vases to remember your service. Please? So if you'll all join me. And now, Mr. Chairman, I will return and say that concludes the superintendent's comments for tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. I would, do we have reason for closing?
Yes, sir. I would welcome a closed session, please.
All right. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-31811 and under the three following paragraphs. Paragraph A five for property, paragraph A six for personnel, and paragraph A eight for school safety plans.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Dedman has second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? And it is unanimous, we're gonna go into closed session.
I can open session and I would like to recognize Mr. Collier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to grant a conditional easement to the City of Mount Holly to locate a replacement sign on the pine wood I can open session and I would like to recognize Mr. Collier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to grant a conditional easement to the City of Mount Holly to locate a replacement sign on the Pine Wood property.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Do I have a second from Mr. Ramsey?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, and it is unanimous. Thank you. Ms. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move that we enter into a memorandum of understanding with Bessemer City for construction of a park adjacent to Bessemer City Primary and Bessemer City Central Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Do I have a second? Ms. Cherry has seconded that motion. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Ms. Cherry.
Mr. Chair, I would like to authorize Superintendent Booker to enter into a contract to purchase approximately 39.3 acres from MB Realty as presented. Set contract to provide for a free look due diligence period through January 15, 2017, and subject to requisite legal approval by the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Do I have a second? Ms. Guthrie has seconded that. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Mr. Collier.
Mr. Chair, please the board to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. I have a motion. I have a second.
You first.
I know. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cherry. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Gavel sounds.
Unanimous.
Hit that gavel.
All right. Great job.
Good job.